Everyone, welcome to the October 3 meeting of the Foxborough Public Schools School Committee. Thank you all for attending and being here. First of all, and welcome, committee, we have all five members here tonight, which is great. Thank you all for getting here as well. Start with open public comment, and we have one person on that is Raffiella. Would you like to speak?
Thank you.
Welcome and thank you for speaking. Just so you know, we allow three minutes for you to speak and offer your public comment. Thank you.
I'll be a lot faster than everyone at the forum, that's for sure. That's why I'm back, because I wasn't able to finish a couple of points that I really wanted to bring out to everybody. I've been in Foxborough about 21 years, and I have adult children, as I said, and they didn't attend Foxborough Public Schools, and my grandchildren are not in Foxborough Public Schools. But this is an important topic for all citizens in Foxborough. This is our town, we live together, we're like brothers and sisters as citizens in Foxborough. So I did some research on my own, and basically I found out there are two main groups that are involved here. One is the 1944 National Congress of the American Indians, and it basically, again, I'm just simply repeating what I said, was established to enforce treaty commitments that between the American tribal nations and the US government. And sometime in 2015, some members of that National Congress of the American Indians, you know, fell prey to politicians, academics, the media, and a variety of grievance groups, and they began a campaign, which was described in some articles I read, as the de-Indianization of America. So for years, this one-sided narrative has been pushed by the powerful in the media and a small percentage of Native tribal members sitting on the N-C-I-A. So to help combat this, in 2014, an organization called the Native American Guardians Association, or NAGA, a nonprofit 501(c)(3), was established to respond to the misconceptions on the Native American names and imagery with facts, truth, respect, and dignity. Well, I've come to find out, and if you can do the research yourself, that that group represents about 76 to 90 percent of the Native Americans in the United States, and these Native Americans want to keep appropriate Native American imagery. They want that to remain. So it seems that what began somewhere in the 60s as a sincere attempt to take all of the, to eliminate all the cartoonish and blatantly degrading stereotypical Indian mascot in sports has sadly morphed into a campaign to eradicate all Native American identity from sports and really the entire American landscape. In many states, they're, you know, taking Native American names away from streets, schools, you know, roads. It's pretty sad. So in 1974, the National Congress of the American Indians, you know, joined with groups like Not Your Mascot Movement and called for the abolishment of the Bureau, actually, of Indian Affairs. And then sometime in 1996, it started to partner with the NCAA, the National College Athletic Association, again with politicians, higher education, psychology departments, departments, and they began to obliterate all Native American imagery.
Time is up, can you please close? Can you please close?
Okay.
Thank you.
Please go to their website, naga.org, nagageducation.org. The majority of Native Americans are in favor of retaining this.
Thank you.
And Raffiella, Raffiella.
Do you want to leave this, do you want to leave your notes?
Raffiella.
Do you want to leave your notes?
Would you give a copy of your notes to Lenore, please, for the record?
I'm sorry.
For the record, if you leave a copy of your notes, we'll put it in the record.
Or you can send them, if you want.
Maybe I'll send them.
Next is, no one else on, on public comment, so thank you.
I'm sorry, I think there's some people didn't realize they meant they were, they should have signed in. Do you want to, the young man in the green shirt raised his hand.
I'm kind of thinking about telling my side of the story, but I'll give it a best shot if I can.
Did you, did you notice? Please, come on up here.
Yes.
Just state your name, please, as well.
I'm, I'm Andrew, and I've been to Foxborough High School from September 2014 through June of 2018, and I would like to state that I would like to keep the Native American depiction, and that is something we can't take away from a Native Americans, as this is American history, like, they helped us when their heritage helped us win wars, like World War I and World War II with their Native American war calls, and, and if we, and also, if we ever take their imagery away, we, we wouldn't have that, they wouldn't have the privilege to be honored as a tribe and for what they, their accomplishments and the job they've put into the United States. And I believe we should keep this logo, like, like they shouldn't feel offended over this lo, over the logo, and people, some people even make an ordeal, like, people shouldn't feel offended over the, people are not offended over the Patriots logo, the Irish are not offended over the Celtics logo, Blue Jackets logo, or, and Native Americans, like the Chicago Blackhawks you have in National Hockey League, and, and also, we went through, in the MLS for the New England Revolution, you went through the crayon flag, which was dating back to the 1994 FIFA World Cup logos, and that actually took the imagery away from being Amer, into the American history, being replaced with the, a R in a circle as a, as it depicted the Revolutionary War stamp, and also, if we ever take the Native American away, it would be, I mean, actually, it would be nice if you guys did not take away the whole imagery of the Native American. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Ian.
I wasn't afraid to do that.
Thank you, Ian.
I said, I said, well, I'm.
Next on the agenda is approval of our minutes. I think there was a couple in the packet, did I have that right? Or a couple set, first?
Two.
Thank you. First was the 8:29 minutes. Any comments or changes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting on August 29 of 2023.
Second. All in favor? Did I say April?
I, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. All, all in favor of approving of the August 29 minutes, please raise your hand. Any no votes?
I'm a.
Any abstentions?
I wasn't there, so.
401, 401, thank you. I thought I said April. There we go. Next, next minutes that were presented were the September 19 minutes, presented to us. And the only addition I would like to change, Lenore, if you would help us make a change, in the paragraph about the mascot, we eventually did move the mascot form to 7 o'clock, but not at that meeting. So at that meeting, it was still 6:30, so in that paragraph, in the first paragraph on the first page, that long paragraph, it should state 6:30, because we made no mention of 7 o'clock until we found out about the passing of Jack Offalet and the arrangements for his family. Page two. Page two, thank you. Page two, under the mascot, further discussion.
I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from the September 19, 2023 meeting with the revisions as noted.
Thank you, Rob. Second on that?
I second.
Second, Michelle. Any further discussion on those minutes?
I wasn't able to be there, I believe.
You want to read it now, or?
I'm going to abstain. No, I read it, I'm going to abstain, I wasn't there.
All in favor to approve the, the September 19 minutes, 1, 2, 3, 4, that's opposed, abstentions. One abstention?
Yeah.
401. Thank you. So next on the agenda is teaching and learning highlights. So we have, Dr. Burdis, would you like to introduce who we have tonight?
Yes, I would love to invite up to the guest table Ms. Jennifer Holmes, who is the Foxborough High School Assistant Principal, and then also Ms. Kathy Joyce, who is our Foxborough preschool coordinator, that are both new to the Foxborough Public Schools. So to highlight and introduce them, and then Dr. Donovan, Principal at the high school, and then Mr. Worth, Principal at the Borough, is joining them as well. So really, this is an opportunity, when we've had people that are in new leadership roles, to be able to have an introduction as a, as a highlight, as part of teaching and learning highlight. So I don't know, Dr. Donovan, if I'm turning it over to you for any introductions, or Mr. Worth?
Sure, so, excuse me. Good evening, school committee members. I'm very pleased to introduce Mrs. Kathy Joyce as our new preschool coordinator for our, the preschool at the Borough School. I presented in front of you last year, I gave you a lot of information about what a wonderful program we run in preschool, and I am extremely confident that that program will continue to blossom under the leadership of Ms. Joyce. She brings a wealth of experience to the role, and she, since starting in August in the role, she's made an absolutely seamless transition, and it's been a pleasure to work with her as, as she begins the year in preschool. So I turn it over to her for just a brief introduction.
Thank you so much. I'm really thankful to be here, I'm just thrilled with what I've stepped into. I mean, it's a beautiful program, the school is beautiful, very talented, dedicated staff, they're super supportive, the administration is really supportive, I just think wonderful things are happening for students in Foxborough, and I'm really glad to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And good evening, I'm thrilled to be here tonight to introduce Ms. Jennifer Holmes.
She is our new assistant principal at the high school, and she's joined us in July and came from Tri-County Regional Folk Tech and has been an incredible addition to our team at the high school. So we were thrilled to have her.
Thank you. I'm also very excited to be here, it's been great getting to know Foxborough and students. I will say we hit the high-speed button once the students survived, but it's been a great experience, and I can just tell, you know, the culture there, where we are supporting the learning and also valuing the contributions of everyone.
Any questions from any committee members? Well, I'll ask one, Ms. Joyce, can you talk a little bit about what your, what your days are like, or what's exciting about your days at the Borough School? And I, maybe I'm using the words exciting because we're so excited to have the new building and some of the facilities at our, at our disposal, and so I'm hoping that you might feel the same.
Oh, I absolutely feel the same. I mean, the physical space is really, it's incredible, I mean, it's state-of-the-art, there's every opportunity for every kind of learner, and the staff is so dedicated and supportive and just are able to meet every single need of the diverse learners that we have. It's, it's not everywhere, and I'm just so thrilled to be a part of, of what's already been established here and then to make new growth, you know, towards meeting any new challenges that we might face, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brett.
Well, I heard wonderful things about both of you, so welcome, and I'm just curious, what tipped it, like, and for you to land here, like, what, just to help us get a win, a window into, because, I mean, administration directs hiring and we only do it at the, at the upper levels, so it's, sometimes it's helpful to hear what your perspective is.
Sure, so in, first of all, Foxborough already has a great reputation among other schools, so, you know, I was in Franklin, Tri-County, so I knew a lot about the Foxborough Schools. And I can just tell, like, through, you know, you know, being, having some administration experience and just being ready to go to that next level, and then through the interview process, I could just tell that this was a place that was going to value any contributions I could bring and also support my growth and learning, and that's, that's, I could just tell through my conversations with Dr. Donovan that, you know, this was going to be a place where I'd be happy.
Nice.
I think I feel similarly, once I, I mean, it sounds kind of corny, but I was kind of scared when I took the step to make a change, and when I walked into my interview, I could just see, you know, it's a similar vision, similar passion, and when I met the team, that, that was it. I was, I was in 100%, and to work with people that share your vision and your passion and your, you know, your drive to make something great, something even better than it already is great, is, is just really unusual, and any reservations I had were, were over in the first five minutes.
It's nice to hear.
I will echo what I said two weeks ago, and then someone graciously reminded us last week of what I said about, we all feel very fortunate that we get to serve our community on the school committee, because we know what a great school community we have, we know what great administrators we have, we have, we know what great educators we have, and we know what fantastic building leadership we have, but most importantly, we know what wonderful students that we have, and that we are all focused on making sure those students find the success that they're, that they deserve in an environment that nurtures them in the way that they deserve to be nurtured. So we are thrilled that you guys, I'm going to steal something from Beverly Lord, who is a longtime school committee member, but she always, whenever there was a new introduction of somebody new to the schools, she always thanked them for making us, Foxborough Public Schools, a part of their journey and a part of their career. So we are so grateful that you're here, and we hope that you feel that same sense of collaboration and community that we all think is so important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All good? Thank you, welcome, welcome to our community, thanks for being, thanks for being leaders in the community, and, and taking our kids where they need to go, much appreciated. Thank you, welcome. Look at this, we're ahead.
Shh, don't jinx us.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's update, Dr. Burdis.
So the first update that I have is just a reminder of the online registration process. Families received an email last week if they had not completed that registration process, and that's really important to us and for students, because when it's activities or sports or all of those things, and then just family updates of emergency information to have that up-to-date, that is not able to happen every year if we don't have families really go right on, and we've got about 50% right now of families that we're still waiting on to complete that. So please, go on, the deadline was tomorrow as far as potential loss of any technology when we think about permissions and things, so again, we know that it's, parents are really busy, but it's really important to have up-to-date information.
Just to clarify, that's no matter what, whether you were in school last year, like, do it again, has to be, okay?
Yes, and it's just a verification too, so it's really, once you can sit down to do that, it's, it's really important. The other piece is a reminder of the School Messenger app, to download that, because that's where you can get the push notifications for any of the messages that go out from the school level or the district level, and it's nice to have it all in one place. So reminder to download the School Messenger app. The other update is on Sunday, our newcomers to Foxborough, there was a wonderful event at the Rodman Performing Arts Theater for a Haitian concert that was planned well before the newcomers that joined Foxborough this end of August, and we had about 35 different people that joined, and it was a concert, it was food, it was just really getting to meet people within the community, so many people came out, we had school staff there as well, and it was just a wonderful welcome for families, that was a great turnout. A reminder that the donation drive to be able to help newcomers is on October 14th, so if you haven't, you know, looked through, gently used items, there was an email, I'll, I'll send that out again as a reminder of things that are being looked for as far as needs, it's, it's adult clothing, it's children's clothing, but it's also hygiene products, it's a lot of things, it was all listed on the email, and that's going to be at the Ahern Middle School as far as the pickup that's going to take place on the 14th. Then another reminder, flu clinic, that information was sent out to families for Friday, October 13th, and that's at the Ahern from 3 to 6, and pre-registration is required for that. So we'll send out another reminder, but again, great opportunity to get your flu shot right here at school, at the Ahern.
Is there a new carrier this year? I thought last year was CVS, and then I went to sign up and it seemed different, just scary.
I'm not sure, Deputy Chief Tom Kenvin is the one that still sent us the link that we're sharing with families and staff.
It looked a little different, I just want to clarify.
Okay, and then the other, just as a, as an update, and the newcomer families to the hotel, we know we've talked about that with the 93 rooms that have been, at this point, filled, we're at 62, so we've continued to enroll students. We had 28 students enrolled previously, and at this point, by the end of this week, we're looking at an additional 11, but at the same time, we're enrolling students district-wide just from other families that are, that are moving to Foxborough. But I know that that is something the committee wanted to be updated on, so that is an update as far as our newcomers that are part of the migrant crisis.
Is that, Dr. Burdis, is that still an equal, a relatively equal distribution between elementary and?
The first phase was half and half, this next phase is more elementary, middle school.
Thank you.
I had a quick question about the, the distribution between the schools and the possible involvement, if any, in the charter school. I know that's not under our purview, it was just something that came across.
Right, that's a really good question, and a number of people have asked, so there's a, a law for charter schools that prohibits for students to be enrolled, and when they have a waiting list, which they do, that also plays, we've asked that question too, because we know the population and the resources that are there, but it, by law, we're not able to enroll students.
Thank you.
But good question.
Thanks for looking into that.
All set?
I'm all set, yes.
Any other questions from anyone? Great, thank you very much, thank you for the report on the newcomers as well.
Oh, one other thing is just a reminder that there's a professional development day on Friday, so there's no school for students on Friday, and then the holiday Monday as well, but.
You just took Nate's thunder.
I was about to say, I was about to say Nate, Nathan's going to tell us that.
You just stole his thunder.
With no school.
He can say it again. Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a student report, I think Nathan, your, your time, thank you so much.
So I have a few updates from the schools, all three elementary schools have had a great start to the school year, thank you to our dedicated staff, wonderful families, and amazing students, it's been great to have everyone back, and we're looking forward to an amazing school year. That's from the BIT principals. From the Ahern, the Metco and the Ahern Pack are partnering on a community cousins initiative to foster relationships between our Foxborough resident families and our Boston resident families, and to establish host families in Foxborough for our students who reside in Boston to have greater access to after-school activities and community events. And then for the high school, next week juniors are taking PSATs, this year they're different, they're all digital, which means they should be shorter and take three periods instead of four. Homecoming's coming up, the dance is set for Saturday, the 14th, students can buy tickets during any of their lunches leading up to then, and then there have also been flags hung up in the halls from countries of students' home speaking languages, and then this data was collected last year through surveys, and that's all I have.
Can I just ask a quick question? Do you want to highlight a new change that they implemented this year about homecoming?
Students from out of town can be invited by?
Yes.
Foxborough residents.
That is a new.
As long as you sign the permission slip in the office.
Make sure that you get your permission slip if you'd like to bring a guest from out of town.
Any questions for Nate? Thank you very much, great report, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Foxborough Public Schools mascot logo, final discussion and vote. So we've had our meetings, we've had our forum, and here we are, you know, as we've talked about, so I don't know what, if there's any questions or discussion of the committee, if you'd like to have.
I would just like to confirm a couple of things, I know we reviewed them regarding financials. I know those were reviewed last spring when we first started the discussions with agreement from the majority of the sitting school committee?
We can hear you.
Okay. Happy to. So I just want to confirm, are my understanding of the financials regarding any proposed change or any potential change. My understanding is that there, the primary items that would need to be changed, this is for everybody who was asked questions about the cost of making a change, those items are the gymnasium floor at the high school, rough estimate, that gets refinished every summer, rough estimate would be less than $1,000 to have a new image put on that floor. Another item that I understand is still in use are the stickers on scoreboards and signage at the playing fields, rough estimate, less than $500 to replace all of those, and that sounds like it's a very generous estimate on those. There is one remaining uniform, I understand, that has been passed down to the girls junior varsity tennis team as part of the normal rotation of uniforms, that still bears any current imagery other than the name Foxborough on it, and there are no other uniforms present that were provided by the school. The stickers that are currently on the football helmet are replaced every year, and that is a planned cost, and then the wrestling mats are normally replaced every, every, several set of years, and they are ending their lifetime, and we would be replacing those with the appropriate or current branding at that time. So there's no unplanned cost there. Are there any other costs of school-provided equipment or uniforms that would be associated with the change?
The only other potential cost, depending on how you, if you make a decision to make a change, would be what your decision is on the, the banners within the gym, and if it's, the intent is to leave as is and go forward with something new, that's, you know, obviously would incur no cost, otherwise, if you're looking at doing some kind of a replacement of the logo on the, the banners, you have about 70 banners that you would have to put a new logo over the existing one. But again, it depends on your vote on that, that's the other one.
So we'll make the assumption that right now, things that would be changed, that we know would be changed, we're talking less than $2,000 in total, roughly, that's an estimate. Thank you for confirming that. I will let anybody else contribute to the discussion at this point.
Yeah. Any comments? Any motions?
I just wanted to say that I'm really extremely sorry to the committee and to the community at large, we weren't able to be at the forum, or I wasn't able to be at the forum, because I was ill, so I just wanted to let everyone know, I was able to watch at home and watched every moment of it, so I have been tuned in, and I apologize, I didn't get to apologize earlier for missing the meeting before that, but we were away, so.
You didn't need to, you weren't.
My heart was here.
Got it.
I just want everyone to know.
All good. And your eyes were.
My eyes.
And your, your, your eyes were watching it as you always do, as any of us always do when we're, when we're gone.
I'm a mom, I'm always watching.
Yes. Any further questions or comments?
I wanted to say thank you to everyone who contributed to the community inbox, and some people sent us handwritten letters, typed letters, because they couldn't fit into the, I guess, the text limit on the community inbox, and everybody who prepared so thoughtfully and shared of themselves on the, on the night of the forum. To say that it was moving and informative would be an understatement, so I just want to say thank you for all the thought that everyone put into it, because it matters, and having people's voice heard always matters, so, that's just my two cents.
Well, I'll echo that too, I appreciate, and people coming out tonight as well, too. I appreciate everyone expressing their views and continuing to communicate with the school committee throughout quite a long period of time, even from last spring up to this time, up to this day, so, great clarity and passion from all the people about what it means to be a warrior in those words, and those, and those understandings from all of you have been excellent. So thank you for all that feedback, and I think that's what the committee was striving to do, was receive feedback and understand the feedback from all the towns members and however they choose to present themselves. Any further discussion?
A question about the financials that Mr. Kenfield just presented, because they differed from the spring markers, I want to know if those were revised before, because I remember in the spring they got up to about 50 or 60 grand.
No, it wasn't, it was never that.
So Brett, 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 we're all set, so thank you, he clarified the financials as, as done. Thank you. Any comments? So I'll make a motion, I'd move for the Foxborough School Committee to affirm the use of the nickname and moniker Warriors to describe the Foxborough High School students, clubs, activities, groups, and teams. I'll repeat that again, to affirm the use of the nickname or the moniker Warriors to describe the Foxborough High School students, clubs, activities, and teams. describe the Foxborough High School students, clubs, activities, groups, and teams.
One more time, sorry.
Can I just make a point of, can I clarify?
Actually, let me finish the motion and see if I get a second right. Move for the, I'd like to move for the Foxborough School Committee to affirm the use of the nickname or moniker Warriors to describe the Foxborough High School students, clubs, activities, groups, and teams.
All second.
Thank you. Discussion.
So this is just the name Warriors? We're going to confirm that we are keeping the name Warriors?
This motion is to confirm the nickname and the moniker Warriors to maintain for all Foxborough High School students, clubs, activities, groups, and teams.
We've never done that, right?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Well.
Go ahead.
I guess my point is, it's one of the more resounding things that I've heard in the last year among all the things. To me, one of the, I guess, one of the things that comes through most strongly in terms of people's feelings and experiences with Foxborough Public Schools and their experience there, and this goes through parents and staff and coaches too, is people talking in a heartfelt and thoughtful manner about what they feel being a Warrior has meant to them, and I guess for that reason, I appreciate the motion. So I, yeah, I'm just saying that I support it.
I made the motion for that exact reason. There are many people here have expressed their, what their belief, what it means to be a Warrior, been crystal clear to me. I'm a Warrior, my daughters are Warriors as well, so I know what it means. Any further discussion? All in favor of motion one as stated? Five-zero vote.
Thanks, Mr. Pearson.
You're welcome. Any other motions? I'll make one. You want me to make one?
I'm trying to figure out which, okay, that's fine.
I'll make another motion then. A motion, a motion to move for the Foxborough School Committee to direct all schools and school entities to phase out the use of Native American indigenous people pictures, representations, and/or iconography as mascots, symbols, and logos. Consequently, Foxborough Public Schools will no longer purchase, commission, or accept gifts for school-related use by any club, activity, group, or team with Native American indigenous person pictures or representations or iconography. Current logos, pictures, and/or iconography currently in use on a Foxborough Public Schools property or displayed will be disbanded and replaced based on its useful life and/or replacement schedule. Is there a second for that motion?
Point of clarification, is that, sorry, can I just point of clarification?
Not a second.
Or does that go to a discussion?
I'd go to a discussion.
Fine, then, what's that?
We need a second to have a discussion on the motion.
Fine. I'd like to discuss the motion, so I can second it.
Thank you.
Is it?
Seconded by Brett.
Can I?
Yes, so we can have a discussion.
As stated, as I'm stating, I just want to clarify the intent of it is those instances of usage of the emblem, logo, however you want to term it, are still in use, right?
Say that one more time.
They would remain in use.
Yeah, as I just stated, current logos, pictures, and/or iconography currently in use on Foxborough Public School property or displayed will be disbanded and/or replaced based on its useful life and/or replacement schedule. So I'll explain my words that I was trying to write there.
I appreciate it.
Useful life, a very good example is uniforms. They just wear out over time. They just simply wear out.
And that's our cycle.
That's our cycle. But on the same token with uniforms, we might have just purchased a uniform now, so we might have a uniform that has two years of life. So we all know that there's a cycle plan for uniforms, so uniforms is a very good example of replacement schedule on their life cycle.
Similar with wrestling mats?
Yeah.
And in that regard, I'm imagining banners have quite a long life?
I would think they do.
So like the scoreboard at the Ahern Field, there's nothing wrong with it? We would leave that intact?
I think we could, yes.
And all the signs, and there are a lot, I guess I never realized that there were so many mascot, or I'm sorry, logos around that field, but all those would remain intact? So essentially, we are, essentially, this is what we are doing anyways, right? We are, we have not currently replaced any of the logos. Is that not correct?
I think there's some that have been disbanded and not used, there are some uniforms that do and don't use it. You know, the intent of this motion here is to have a point and a moment of decision for us as a board that we will no longer use it from this point forward.
Which is essentially what we've been doing except for the uniforms.
Correct.
So there is no change?
I would think so.
I mean, it's like, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, my understanding around this.
Well, I just want to clarify, so there is, there is a difference.
Okay.
Because, I'm sorry, this is still a business meeting?
We're good.
There is still, there, we have not purchased uniforms that have the Native American imagery for several years. We, they've been through the normal cycles, so that practice has been in place. But what is in this motion in particular is that we will not accept any donation of material goods from like a booster organization, a community organization that has that Native Ameri, that has any Native American imagery on it.
That's correct.
That's a key difference to what is happening right now, because we do know that booster organizations, whether they're athletic or music or whatever, have the opportunity to do what they want, and they can still do that, we just won't accept those as part of use in our schools.
Yeah, an example would be when the, if the wrestling mats wear out over use, that if the wrestling booster group came forward to do wrestling mats, it would have to be without Native American imagery. Those are the words that are very clear in this motion, to accept gifts.
Okay, so then, I guess, again, another point of clarification, because I don't fully understand this. Booster clubs, so then if we make this motion, we decide what the booster clubs do? Or we dictate, we do not?
No.
So the booster clubs actually can still go and do whatever they want to do regardless of what we decide?
Yep, and I'm just going to repeat the words so everyone can hear it, right? The words here say that will no longer purchase, commission, or accept gifts?
Yes.
For school-related use by any club, activity, group, or team.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to understand that if, if we were to say that the logo changes, who that impacts and who we have say-ups? We don't have, so the booster company, the booster clubs can still do whatever they want, they still can have the Native American?
They always have, yes, we don't, we don't control the booster groups.
Okay.
The school committee doesn't have the power.
No, that's fine.
To regulate the booster groups.
That's actually.
Point of information, because I think you're mistaken, there is a policy on what the booster's clubs can do with the schools, and basically, in most cases, it's a requirement that they make the donation in a cash basis and we acquire whatever the asset is so that it's owned by the town and owned by the school committee. So the booster's clubs can't just do whatever they want. If they want to hire an additional coach, they have to submit that they want to hire the additional coach, we query the coach, we go through the process, we hire the coach, they fund it. So it's, this is not a catch-all that they can do whatever they want. On their own side and outside of the schools, they can do whatever they want, but as far as how it affects the schools and what they give, donate, and support, is all done through a process that's been in place for years.
So by the way, I want 100% agree with that. The words that are there of accept gifts is the connection to the school. So you are correct, and I would agree 100% that as the booster groups engage with the school district and partner with the school district, then that falls into this, into this thing. My reference was for other outside actions that are not partnered with the school districts. That's where I was trying to answer your question, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yeah, so connecting it to the school district is key for our authority as well, so agreed.
I have to say something. I feel like the wording in this is really tricky. I am not sure that I'm supportive of this. I'd like to just say it publicly because I think that there, this is not a cut-and-dry issue as I see it. I think that there's a lot of passion here and passion in the town and passion to leave things the way that it is, and I understand that there are two sides that feel very strongly and have a lot of passion. We had a forum, a public forum to gather information and to collect information and ask for input, and we received it, and I just, I don't know, I don't know that I'm, I'm putting it out there, it doesn't matter, there's a motion and there's a second and there's a discussion, but I just need to, to just say I'm not, I'm just not, not comfortable. It just seems very gray, the wording on this seems very gray in that. I would understand it would go from this motion, then it would go into policy subcommittee, then policy subcommittee would create a policy that would tighten this up, or is this, this language just seems a little bit vague in my opinion? And that's just my opinion.
Got it.
Which, can I ask one? Sorry.
Brett, you want to ask a question?
Yeah, which, because I'm just trying to understand too, which would, and it doesn't mean to be now, but like, as you look at it, which things catch you as fuzzy?
So everybody in the town showed up and spoke, and everybody has a lot of passion. There was an overwhelming presence of people in Foxborough that said, leave everything the way it is, follow state guidelines. It's been overwhelming, so I don't feel like I'm doing my job as someone who's sitting here representing my town if I don't speak up and say this, because I just feel that it's, it's just, it seems very gray, the use of phase-out, it just, it doesn't feel comfortable for me, I'm just being honest. I understand that ultimately, there's two different camps, people who don't want the logo, and like, I understand, I heard everything, I've read everything, I see both sides, I do, I really do, but I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with the language. I do feel it's vague, and I do feel it just, I don't know, I'm being honest, I'm being, I'm being videotaped in front of the world, I'm being honest, I'm speaking from the heart.
We all are being honest, at all times, yeah, please, go ahead.
So Sarah, thank you for sharing that. I want to be, think we need to be careful, and I'm not minimizing anyone that participated, but there were eighty-eight people, this is a town of seventeen thousand. I mean, it's just, so it was not, and I appreciate, this has been a wonderful reminder that people are watching, that people are paying attention, that people are committed into what happens in our schools and the success for our students, so it's been a wonderful reminder of that. But we, we are elected to represent all of the people in our community and to ultimately make sure that our schools are fiscally responsible, which they are, we know that, right? And to make sure that our students, regardless of where they come from, regardless of what they look like, regardless of where they are going, have the best opportunity they can in Foxborough Public Schools, and we've done that. So my point here is, if there's language in this that doesn't, if you don't like the idea of this, that's one thing, but if there's language in here that doesn't seem, that seems gray or seems ambiguous, then I would love to know what that language is, because I, phase-out is a soft term, right? If that's the term that you're, that is sticking out for you, we have, we have an opportunity to reword that so that it doesn't, so that it eliminates some ambiguity. If you're saying you're not comfortable making a decision in general about this because we want the state to make a decision for us, okay, that's a different piece, but so I'd love to know if there's something in this, or is it just in general?
No.
You don't feel like we should be making a decision on this?
I don't, I feel like it should be a, oh my gosh, now, I'm getting nervous, but it should be just a vote of no action at this time. I think we should fall and not make a change.
So it's not vague, it's not vague, you just want no action?
I think that it is. I think the vagueness of the use of the word phase-out, I'm not comfortable with that. There is, I knew that there was a connection with accepting money, it does go through the school, we vote on it all the time, so boosters clubs can't fund anything with the Warriors. I just, I, yeah, that's my problem with this, the wording on this.
Got it.
But I, yeah.
Any further discussion on this motion?
I guess I didn't expect a motion like this. I, I am fine continuing forward as is, I'm concerned that the language in this is going to bring us to a place that I can't, I can't see in the future right now, I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel about this, I'm sorry. I, I hear what Sarah's saying about the no action, and I'm, I don't think we should, I don't know that I necessarily agree with the no action, but I'm not saying that we need, I'm not looking for a sudden action either. I'm concerned about the town and the way the town has been split, and I don't want to, I'm not looking to rip off a Band-Aid here. I would actually prefer instead of a no action, that we consider other options. It is hard to say that you're going to take something away and then offer nothing in return. I have nothing to offer anybody, and without that, that's difficult, so I'm not saying I want to make an action, I want action, I want to make, start looking at other options behind the scenes and then offer people something to decide from. All I'm saying is, I'm going to take something away.
I think it's, this might be this guy.
Okay, sorry.
Wasn't you.
Okay. You know, do you know what I'm saying? I do feel strange about that, and like, if we start phasing things out, what are we going to put in his place? Are we leaving it blank? Are you putting the F? Because I know I don't love the F, and I know a lot of the students don't love the F, and the thing is, it's hard, you're saying that we are now going to put money into the F knowing that eventually it will need to be replaced too, so I have a hard time with that. So you're saying that yes, it's only gonna, it's gonna cost less than ten thousand, but then you're putting money into putting something else new only to have that ripped down and replaced again. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if you're, if you're not replacing this, what are you going to put in his place?
So, yeah, I would suggest that, that once, once this motion is complete, we could put a motion together for the next step forward. Did you have something?
Yes, I think Brett made a motion.
Did you want to say something?
Did you not, Brett?
No, I was.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
No, I was going to actually ask, is that, it's discussion, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to ask Michelle a question, I mean, would you, to your point, would you like to see there be a group thinking about the future in advance of considering a motion like that which Mr. Pearson offered?
In a way, yes, but I know, and it becomes difficult because it comes a whole paradox thing, like, one thing kind of feeds into the other, like, you know, how do you put something into motion without putting something else into motion? But I, I'm not ready to rip anything away from the town without offering something, and that F is not what I want to offer.
Well, I, I think we should put something together.
So let me, can I?
Yeah.
Can I offer a?
That's why it's, keep discussing.
Can I offer just a change?
No, 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 please.
Can I offer a change in order? Because we, there is the potential to go with another proposed motion that says, let's start the process of appointing an advisory group, whatever, to determine what they want to represent the Warrior of today and the Warrior of tomorrow, not the Warrior of forty years ago. We have that opportunity to do that, that puts a process in place to do that. This motion that we're in front of us right now, so if we table this motion at this moment to only bring back up again after the next motion, right? This motion is essentially just documenting what is already happening. That's my understanding, is that this motion essentially documents what's already happening. So if we, is it, is it more amenable to table this motion, move to the next, and then potentially go back to this? So I, I mean, I will, I just, let me just, so for the people that want to hear this, I left the public forum last Tuesday night less sure of what I thought a motion forward I left the public forum last Tuesday night, less sure of what I thought a motion forward should be. And, which is probably a surprise to people that think they knew, they have known for months what my feelings were on this. And I have never publicly stated what my feelings are on this. So, but I have come to the point where I do believe we have a responsibility to define what we want the imagery for Foxborough High School to be, and Foxborough Public Schools. A decision has never been formally made about that. We have a, as was noted, and has been several times, when it comes to anyone at the high school, or anyone in a booster club, or anyone, whatever, regardless of what it is, it's essentially the Wild West in letting them pick what they want to pick. There are how many different images that use some type of Native American reference? There are how many different images that use some version of an F, right? So, is this the time we say, Foxborough doesn't look the same way it looked 40 years ago? Our schools don't look the same way they looked 40 years ago. Our thinking, our understanding, our goals for our students are all, have all evolved over 40 years as they should. And ultimately, we should take the opportunity, like every other organization does, to say, is this what we want, and is this what our school community wants? And is this what our, is this what they want to represent them? We have an opportunity to do that, but this motion in front of us, motion, the one we, the one we're discussing right now, really doesn't do anything, my understanding, other than just say what we, just formalizes what we're already doing. The next one is actually the critical one, which is how we move forward.
Exactly. I would agree. I think there's a critical motion to follow that says, how do we move forward effectively? How do we move forward effectively as a, as a, as a school committee and, and school?
So, if we're not replacing it, anything that's worn out is replaced with the F?
It's replaced with whatever. So, so I think we haven't decided what's being replaced with.
That's ambiguous.
It is ambiguous, but the thing is, is like, okay, so let's say we do put a committee together. There is an interim where the committee has no decision, and in that interim, there is the possibility that something needs to be replaced. At that time, what will it be replaced with? It will be replaced with the F?
Probably what's happening right now.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
But I agree, I agree. Putting, putting something together to move forward is exactly what, what we would absolutely need to do. There's no question about that. So, that's where I think that after this motion, we could follow with, with this other motion that puts together a plan of attack to involve all constituents. And I do, I do agree with Mr. Cantfield's statement, that there's a lot of what's happening that's already been happening.
No, I, I.
If people, if people respect the history of what's been taking place in the town, there have been other decisions made by school committees as well. I'll give you a good example, is the center of the San Burns Field. That was decided by the school committee 10 years ago. That, that school committee had that decision.
Yes.
And they put an F on it for a reason.
Yes.
And I think there have been other situations over the past 10 or so years that other decisions have been made. So, I do believe in what Mr. Cantfield is saying, in that this is actual growth and a place that we have all taken ourselves as a community over many years. Might not be the, might not be the preference of the majority or many people, but, but, but still, there are people, there are people that have had made decisions already that have taken place for this school department over the years, that have moved in a different direction. So, I do think there is some continuation of current direction. Just my opinion.
Just as a point of clarification, we don't need this motion to keep doing what we've been doing and wait for future guidance from the state, correct? Thank you. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Any more questions? Any more questions on this motion?
On this motion? Okay.
On this motion? Yeah, thank you. Brent?
Two. One, is people's understanding, to my, my reading of this motion on the, at our feet right now, is that this is similar to what KP did? Is that the similar read to other people?
From what I've read, it sounds familiar.
Where I thought, my understanding, what they did is they just said, we're not buying more stuff?
Yeah. I think Medfield did something similar too.
Okay. Second, we just voted for a reason, to affirm the use of warriors. I'm, and people heard me say this when it came to masks a long time ago, I'm not a fan of, as a community, us waiting for other people to tell us what to do. It doesn't sit right with me. I understand that, that people may feel that way because it may increase the potential of holding on to something people hold dear, but if it were a different situation, people might feel differently. I guess I don't know. And so, my own inkling, and perhaps I'm being stubborn on a point that is, I shouldn't be stubborn on, is that I really don't like waiting for the Commonwealth to tell our town what to do when we're in a position to make a decision, whatever that decision is. That's just my point. And I recognize it's, the issue is perhaps bigger than, than my qualms about that, but as a policy measure, I, I don't like it. I would rather us decide our destiny, but that's, that's me. And then, the follow-up to that is, and it's a wondering, okay? I don't know, and you just heard me say that I don't want to wait for the state, because I don't, on anything, frankly, ever. But is, I wonder if it's possible that if the state says, you got to get rid of this stuff, that they would make us also get rid of warriors, because it's associated with the, the logo and emblem we've been using for 40 years now? Just, just a wondering.
That, that is possible?
It's not a position statement.
And, and to add to.
Because I would, I think that would be, I, I think, at least from what I heard, and I'm filtering a lot of opinions, I think that would be more upsetting to the town. I mean, they wouldn't be upset with us, they'd be upset with the state, but still, I think that would be more net upsetting to the town if we did do away with both.
Anything else?
Did you?
No, I, no. No, but I agree with, I just want to say, I agree with Brent, not waiting for the state. I did look into it. There are two states that came down and forced the change on logos, and it was Maine and it was New York. New York made the decision in April 2023, and they forced the decision to be finished by the end of 2024. That is 14 months. That sounds like a lot of time, but it's not. And I do not want to be caught not considering our options at this point, because 14 months can put us in a very bad position. And I do agree with being proactive and considering options. I'm not saying that, we have time, so we're not going to be forced into a corner, so that's what I agree with Brent on. I do not want to be backed into a corner by waiting for the state. That being said, I don't think the state's going to make a decision anytime soon, so I don't think that scenario is going to occur, but I wouldn't want to, I do agree with the point. I would not want to be forced by the state, because the state can back us into a timeline that we can't meet.
I agree with you too. I agree too.
By that point, can I just bring up that Rob just explained that it was less than $2,000. If the state did come down and make some kind of mandate, it would only be less than $2,000 to fix uniforms and things like that.
Right. But it would only give us 14 months to decide. Like, in 14 months, like, if we don't make a decision, we are stuck with that F. And again, not that the F is, anything's wrong with the F, it's just, there is an opportunity to take something that is, you know, unique to Foxborough. The F isn't it, and that's where I'm stuck.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
I don't want to be. Okay.
Stuck with something that is not, that doesn't represent Foxborough. And I, I do want something that represents Foxborough, whatever it is. So, I, I'm still a little stuck here, and I, and I understand it's because I'm, I'm reading ahead, but the assumption is, is now that we make this decision that nothing, that nothing gets replaced, assuming that you will come out to a decision on the other end, assuming that within a year that it is.
I think that's what it would be, yeah. And I would, I would, I would have to trust our professionals and our students and whoever is involved in decision-making that they will, because that's who, that's who they are. That's who they are. That's what they've always done. That's the community, that's the community we are. It's absolutely the community who we are. Any further discussion on the motion?
Well, I'm just curious. Michelle, are you still, and it's fine if you're still thinking on it, because it's a.
I, I am still thinking on it, because my concern is, is like, let's say we do decide to, to think about it, and, and I'm okay with presenting options in a year. What I am not 100% confident now is committing to the fact that I am going to agree to a decision a year and ahead of time. I can agree to a committee and reviewing that option in a year time, and considering the option at that time. I'm not okay agreeing that I will accept that option right off the bat without knowing what my option is.
I would, I would agree. I would, I would think that any committee that's going to do work is going to come back to the school committee. I would agree with you.
Okay. And, and so that's, so that, at the end of the year, there is a possibility that there still is no agreement?
It's possible, I guess. Yeah, yeah. But I would think that's exactly what would be the plan. I think as we're engaging as a school committee to lead for our students and the community, then they would come back to the school committee as well with that responsibility for the betterment of everyone. Yeah, I would, I would agree with you.
Okay. Because I'm okay with looking at options, I'm not okay to agreeing to anything.
Yeah.
Okay?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have anything, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would agree with you. I would agree, I wouldn't have anything to propose. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to propose that. I wouldn't, personally. I'm not, someone else might, but I wouldn't want to propose that, so.
I'm okay with agreeing to consider options. I'm not okay to agreeing.
Yeah.
To committing to anything at this point.
Yeah.
When you say, so, what, um, sorry. When you say committing to anything, I'm sorry, can you?
I, like, so, I don't want to say that we're going to put a committee together, and that's guaranteed that 100% at the end of, the end of line, that there is going to be a logo, and I'm going to have to agree to that logo. I, at the end of the year, there may not be a logo to agree on.
100% agree with you. I, I agree, yeah.
Do you, do you understand what I'm saying? I, I'm afraid of saying that by agreeing to this, I'm agreeing that, yes, 100%, there will be a change at the end of the year, because at the end of the year, there might not be.
Yeah. I agree with you. Well, I, I think, I think we as a committee would be going down, if we didn't agree to letting committee people do their work and supporting the work of a committee as it recommends to us, then we'd be going down a slippery slope for us. So, I agree with you 100%. And I think, and I think we've done that. We've done that for ourselves.
So, can I just, just by point of clarification, we're, we're now moving to table the issue of Foxborough Public Schools' use of Native American imagery as its athletic logo and to revisit in one year?
We are under, we, I, my motion was to move to, this motion right here that you read.
Okay.
It says to move to the, do you want me to read it again?
No, you don't have to read it, but now she's talking about a year, and I'm just, I'm moving ahead. You're losing me, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm stuck in the paradox.
She's, she's, she's clarifying her.
Thank you, Brent.
I'm sorry.
Michelle, are you all set? No, I.
Yeah, yeah. Again, it's just, you.
So, we're.
You're crystal clear. I think you're, for me, you're crystal clear.
I do understand, I, I understand, there's a, it's the chicken before the egg thing here, and I, and I'm stuck with that. And so, by agreeing to one thing, I'm afraid of agreeing to the other, and I'm not sure in which order it should come, because either way, I'm not sure I'm getting the clarity that I want.
Very fair.
Okay? That's all. I want to consider options, I don't want to agree to anything. I want to agree to consider my options. I don't want to say that right now I'm agreeing to, to anything yet, but I do want to see options. I mean, they're, that's, that's all.
This motion would, would take away all Native American imagery going forward.
That's correct.
But that's what we're doing, essentially, what we're doing now.
Right.
Whether or not we, so now, if that's true, if that's what we're doing now, whether or not we make this motion, that is the path we're traveling anyways.
Yeah, I think so.
So, the motion is just solidifying what we're doing now. It is not changing anything. Is that correct?
I think so. That's my opinion.
It's, uh, no, no. It's, it's, it's affirming, it's, it's putting into, hi!
It's okay, hey, stop, it's good, it's good.
It's affirming, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's saying that we're agreeing to this instead of, you know, it's like, you know.
You said it well.
It's exerting, it's exert, it's exerting control over that.
You said it right on. I, I, I think you were crystal clear, so. Any, any further discussion?
No, I don't think so. I just think this motion is, yeah, no.
Michelle.
No, any further, I'll say. Any further discussion?
No.
Brent, any further discussion?
Because we have to, there's a motion out, right? And we have to deal with this motion.
Yes.
Up, down. Are there any changes you're proposing to the motion, or?
No, because.
Given your, okay, that's what I was.
Only because my understanding of the way things are done now, and, you know, understand, I have students in, in the school, but they are not sports students, so, you know, I have a little less understanding of the boosters and the way things work. I did, I did understand that the things were being phased out. I just wanted to see the difference between what is being done now and then what is being stated here. So, like, students can still wear the logo at school, this does not impact anything. It, okay, that's where I'm trying to get my clarification, only because of my lack of understanding of how this is currently working, that's.
Okay, good, I understand.
I'm just trying to make an informed decision.
Yeah, I respect, oh, I got that, yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So, I don't think.
On, on a motion.
I know it's a business meeting, but I think.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I understand. I think you just need to state what you're actually.
I'm going to do that. I'm going to repeat what I've stated.
But here's the thing.
I'm all set, I'm all set. Thank you.
Action, no action, and if it's no action, plus the action.
So.
So, clarify that for everyone, I think we're being fishy.
I'm going to re, I'm going to re-clarify. Okay. I'm going to re-clarify for the committee. I'll re-clarify the motion if you'd like me to read it. Would you like me to read it? Everyone, one more time.
I think you should. I think you should.
Move for the Foxborough School Committee to direct all schools and school entities to phase out the use of Native American indigenous people pictures, representation, and/or iconography as mascots, emblems, and logos. Consequently, Foxborough Public Schools will no longer purchase, commission, or accept gifts for school-related use by any club activity group or team with Native American indigenous person pictures, representations, and/or iconography. Current logos, pictures, and/or iconography currently in use on Foxborough Public Schools' property or displayed will be disbanded and or replaced based on the useful life and/or replacement schedule. But we stated before. All in favor? 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 All in favor?
You're bullying right now, just so you know.
All in favor?
This is a big problem in this world right now.
All in favor? All in favor?
You're bullying right now.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. I'm, I'm calling the vote.
You're calling the vote?
Just calling a vote.
I'm calling the vote, all right.
Just calling a vote.
All in favor? All in favor?
You're bullying.
All in favor? All in favor? Can we please have order? We can't even hear what we're doing. You can't even hear what you're doing.
Stop bullying! Stop bullying!
Can we, can we call, can we call the vote? We can, we can reject, we can reject the vote.
We can reject the vote and then if, can, and motions can be brought back?
You can broach whatever you want.
All right.
Can we call the vote? All, any more questions on the motion? Any more questions on the motion?
I want to just say something before I may. Thanks, thanks.
That's why I was asking earlier.
No, that's fine.
On the motion.
Thank you. So, no, I appreciate that. In terms of, and thank you for allowing me to continue discussion, Mr. Chair. One of the things that was the biggest point of reflection for me on, on, on all of this, especially the motion that is before us right now, is our mission as a public school to be for everyone all the time. And while I absolutely believe, understand that it's, it's meaning, it's importance to those people who hold any symbol dear, where the crux for me comes is that our mission is to ensure a safe place for everyone. So then when there's disagreement, that's where it gets icky. And that's where it falls to us to have to make, make the seven, ten split decision or just put forward and say what we think is best and to be consistent for the mission to protect all kids and serve all kids at all times. And so that's where, that's where I'm having a hard time not supporting this motion. Because although I wholly recognize the importance of it in the same way, I believe everything I said about the importance of warriors and the importance of the moniker to the community, the issue becomes a low, just the picture that was a huge improvement 40 years ago that Coach Martinelli picked. It was a huge improvement and it has been. But as we evolve, it's mean, it's come to symbolize division for some. And that's where I have to hang my hat in terms of our duty of care to all kids. And that's why, that's why I'm having a hard time voting against this motion. And I just wanted to say that. And that's why I, so thank you for allowing that discussion because it's, and just in listening to this Thaxons processing of this, because it is a big deal, it, it gave me further pause. So, anyway.
I agree.
Thanks for allowing more discussion.
Any further comments on the motion? Hearing no further.
I don't think, I don't.
I'll try not to interject this time.
Thank you, no good. Rob, you all set? Brett?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Sarah? No comments? I'm all set too. All in favor of the motion as presented, which was the long, long version? All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Abstentions?
I, I am, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on it.
Are you abstaining?
I, I am, I'm sorry.
It's not a sorry, that's your vote.
It's your vote.
I, I understand, I just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm having difficulty wrapping my head around.
It's fine, it's fine.
So I'm sorry.
311, notated 311.
Thank you.
Want to move this second?
For six?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the next, the next motion that we would like to discuss is to move for the Foxborough School Committee to direct school administration to form a committee for the purposes of researching, imagining, and then proposing a new official mascot, emblem, and/or logos for school committee approval. Make of this, makeup of this committee will comprise a range of students, parents, Foxborough Public School faculty, staff, administration, and coaches. The committee shall complete their work by August 2024.
Second on that motion? I'll second it.
Fine.
Discussion on that motion to put together a committee? And Michelle, I think that's kind of where you were going to.
Yeah, no.
But I don't think that motion says what's going to happen. It just says something.
Right, and I just want to clarify, it does not say what's going to happen. And so by agreeing to this, we are not, we are considering options. We are not formally doing or changing anything at this point. We are considering options.
Can I just, so let's be very clear. There is, there is nothing, there is nothing that has ever been formally accepted as far as an image goes. So we are not.
Yes, I understand that.
Denying that. We are simply solidifying what we want that to be going forward. That's my understanding of the history as it's explained, been explained to us several times.
I think the motion is just putting together a committee of, of range of students, parents, Foxborough Public School faculty, staff, administration, and coaches to look ahead over the next year to develop a logo or mascot identifying for the school district. I think that's what the motion's for, just to put a group of people together. Do you understand that?
That's why you guys are up there.
I do, and, and I am all for being open-minded and considering options. Like I said, I'm just not for making any solidifying decisions at this moment.
Yeah.
Especially not knowing the options.
I agree with you.
For all we know, the options, we could come out with, you know, five more Native American Indian heads coming out of this, you know.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I don't think this says that we know what's going to happen. I think this would be wise to put a committee together to look at it. Any other questions on that motion to put together? Direct the school administration put together committee? Any further questions?
I'd just like to consider all sides, that's all I'm saying. I just want to consider options.
Is there, so is there a way that you would like to add or change this language to reflect that intent?
No, I just want to clarify that we are saying proposing. We are not saying.
Yes.
They're not saying selecting.
Selecting, we're not saying vote, you know, accepting. It is just proposing.
Correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that the language as I'm reading it as is, is what we are meaning. It is to be proposed.
That's exact.
Nothing is decided.
I would agree with you, that's what it says.
It is just considering, we're just looking at everything.
Yep. Yeah, it's proposing, yeah, I would agree.
It's our chance to be curious.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. Would your motion allow the committee to bring back the warrior logo if that's what they felt was the best interest of the town?
The motion doesn't specify anything that's coming back or, it doesn't put requirement. This motion does not clarify that. But this motion does not clarify that.
Which is why I said, gave the example, we could end up with five different other Native American head logos coming out of this. This is not saying anything, and I'm not saying that that's what I want or.
It's putting a committee together.
But it's just, it's.
I'd just like to say that it was just voted in, moved to, for Foxborough School Committee to direct all schools and school entities to phase out the use of Native American indigenous pictures. So no, it cannot.
Yeah.
It cannot. No.
So.
They can, they could be proposed, but by the motion that was just passed.
This motion does not say that.
Unless the school committee changes, that, that, the school committee has said that we're phasing out the use of Native American indigenous.
But then if they were to propose new ones, could that motion then be undone?
I wouldn't think so.
It cannot be undone, so then.
It would require, it would, it would require a, another motion to repeal this motion.
Exactly.
Right, but that can be done.
Or to withdraw this motion.
Of course.
So but if, if that's community, and again, and I'm just talking ridiculous, you know, like just. Scenarios that won't happen, but let's say they did come back with five indigenous peoples' images. This motion can then be repealed then to allow.
Would probably have to be, yes.
Yes.
But it could be.
Of course.
Yeah, of course.
If the school committee chose to.
Repeal.
Repeal it, yeah.
So then when you say that you're considering a committee, you are not closing off any options to the committee?
When who's considering?
When this committee forms, this committee is not.
Regard.
They are not confined.
You're talking about the motion that we're, that Richard just made right now.
This committee will not be restricted in any way. They're, they can consider a multitude of logos, correct?
Yeah, I think so. I think the previous motion negates Native American imagery. I mean, probably. Wouldn't you think so, the way it said, stated? What do you think?
I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying if you were to be open-minded, you would have to consider all options, even if some of them are not what we want. You know, you know what I'm saying, like you would have, like, like there's a possibility that the committee could come up with a plethora of options and some of them may be.
I, can I?
I don't want to close the committee off to anything.
So can I, Richard, do you mind?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay, so I understand exactly where you're coming from because that's where I was, that's where I am as well. If, if this committee, if we allow this committee to be curious about what they want a warrior to look like for now and for the future, then, and they feel strongly enough that some type of indigenous iconic, iconography, is that the right way? Yeah, God, that, thank you, I practiced. Iconography is the best representation of a warrior and they can make a compelling case to the committee at that time. Then, then there could also be an action to withdraw that motion at that time to say we could consider that. I mean, that is open, but I think the important thing is here is we give, what you're saying is you want to make sure that this committee that is made up of students, parents, Foxborough Public School faculty, staff, administration, and coaches, the freedom to be curious and the freedom to.
Yes.
Say what they want again versus what was picked for them 40 years ago.
Yes.
Perfect.
That, that is what I want.
You need a committee, you need a committee. Yeah, I agree.
I just want everything to be open-minded. And I also want to say that this, me asking these questions are just trying to look at both sides. I am not endorsing one side or the other here. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody gets a chance.
Yeah.
You know, that's all.
That's why your motions are put there, forward, forward.
Okay.
So Rob motioned to create a school administration to form a committee. Any further questions on that motion? Brett, any further questions?
Um, no.
Sarah?
No.
Rob? Michelle? I have none. All in favor of the motion that Rob has put forward? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Great. 410. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Are there any more topics from the committee on the mascot logo? Discussion item.
And I just want to make it clear, I know everybody's disappointed by how this goes. This is just a discussion, we are just considering options. We have not agreed.
Next, next on the agenda, next on the agenda is the school committee appointment for the delegate to the MASC joint conference. So we have to appoint a delegate to the, we have to appoint a delegate to the meeting? We're moving on the agenda now, so if we can just have order, thank you. You can stay, you can stay as long as you want, thank you.
Regarding this agenda item, I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Were you planning to go this year?
Yeah, I was planning on going.
Okay.
And you're going as well?
I am.
Yeah. And Michelle, are you going to go to the joint conference?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to be the delegate though, because I?
I'd actually, I actually would like to, I would actually like to nominate Michelle.
That'd be great.
Since this will be her first, right?
Sure.
I actually would like to nominate Michelle to be the delegate.
It's a good experience.
Sarah does so many other things for the committee, and I think this would be a great opportunity for Michelle. I did ask her if she was open to that, so I didn't just volunteer without asking. But I would actually like to nominate Michelle.
A second for Michelle. Uh, yeah. Second by Brett. Any further discussion for the delegate?
No.
All in favor of Michelle as a delegate? Vote for yourself, yeah.
I'm grateful for anybody who can go.
There you go, 5-0, we're good to go. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's goals for 2324. Further discussion and vote? If we remember at the last meeting, we talked about the formal plan?
I just need a little bit of quiet, I actually have trouble hearing.
Okay, let's, let's do it right then. Here we go. So we'll continue on with the superintendent's goals for 2324. Further discussion and vote? At our last, at our last committee meeting. At our last committee meeting, we discussed the, the planned observation and evaluation cycle for the superintendent. And I think you had all the packets submitted last, last committee meeting. And I think we just wanted to come to closure on our discussion if we would like to adopt that two-year process, which would extend the, that informal, the dialogue throughout the first year and then the final written evaluation at the end of the second year. Does anyone have any further questions for the superintendent about that or further discussion?
I don't, I know Sarah, you weren't at that meeting, so I don't know if you had a chance to review the.
I did, I watched it, yeah. I was on a plane, but I had my headphones in.
Thank you.
Paid for the wifi.
So I think we do need, if, if there's no discussion, we just need action to adopt the two-year cycle plan for the evaluation of the superintendent, beginning for this year as the first year of the cycle. Was that correct? That's correct, right? Yeah, yes.
Yes.
All right.
Go ahead.
I move to shift the superintendent evaluation to the mode of experienced leader and thus adopt a two-year evaluation cycle with this being year one.
Thank you. A second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Canfield. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor? 5-0, thank you very much, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Burrows, for suggesting that, putting that plan together and helping us better understand that. Very helpful. Overnight travel, is it?
Second.
What?
Yeah, so then the, the second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which I'm happy to make if that's okay.
I'm sorry, thank you very much, thank you.
I move to accept the superintendent's goals, recognizing their consistency with our plan for success and its four pillars in its usual detail with our thanks.
Second on the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sarah, second the goals, thank you. Any more discussion on the superintendent's goals as submitted? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor of the superintendent's goals? 5-0. Thank you, Brett, for catching, I appreciate it.
Thanks for ambition.
Dr. Donovan, approval for overnight travel, thank you.
Told you not to jinx us earlier.
Who do you think, Dan? We have three trip proposals this evening. Two for the music department. One is, one of their two trips is a trip for all the ensembles to Virginia Beach this spring. And then the second is a kind of seeking provisional approval for the Essentially Ellington program. They're going to submit a tape again and hopefully they'll be accepted. And the third trip is a, is a new trip. It would be for the girls' basketball team to participate in a tournament in Florida over, over winter break. This would be the first time that the girls' program will have participated in this type of tournament. And the tournament is run by KSA and they will provide all the notifications to the MIA and sanctioned through NFHS as soon as all the sending schools have finished their registration later this fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I always appreciate that, like the music trip, the Ellington, we know because they have to submit tapes, but you have to put in approval for going out of state, but you don't know if they're accepted yet. So I kind of go like this, you know, you do your jinx it, but, but they've been accepted so many years in a row, so.
Right, and I think I ask this question every year. Is this one motion or is this three motions?
I would do three motions.
Okay, thank you. I guess that I know I ask it every year and clearly I don't remember the answer every year.
Yeah, I guess. So let's motion the first one.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the overnight travel proposal for the music department trip to the Festival of Music in Virginia Beach in April of 2024.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor? 5-0 for Virginia Beach. Trip two.
Our motion that we accept the overnight travel proposal for the music department to a trip to, to a potential trip to the Essentially Ellington event in New York City in May of 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor? 5-0 for New York, Essentially Ellington.
I'll just keep going. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the overnight travel proposal for the girls' varsity basketball team varsity basketball team to a trip to the KSA events basketball tournament in Orlando, Florida, December of 2023.
I shall second it.
All in favor? Five, zero for the basketball tournament. Thank you very much, into Florida.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Donovan.
Dr. Donovan.
Come on.
Any other matters? Mr. Yukna?
Yep.
Dr. Burrows?
None, other than we're very excited for a full day of professional development on Friday for, for our teachers, our curriculum directors and department heads have worked very hard to put together a full day of learning, and, and we're looking forward to it, and we hope everybody enjoys their long weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Burrows? Brett?
Nope.
Sarah?
As always, I have my recreation department updates. We have a few events coming up, the signups are open, and there's also, for our student population, plenty of volunteer opportunities. We have pumpkin carving coming up, we have the Halloween parade coming up, and that, I believe, I have to get my calendar for that, actually. I thought somebody was going to yell it out from the audience, I believe it's October[1590.04]